Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the ZBA meeting of April 7th. And as we get started, I'm going to ask those that are here in the building to turn off your phones, make sure that they're quiet, and stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Little bit of business before we get fully started here. I am going to read the right-to-know law regarding our town meetings. As Chair of the Goffstown Zoning Board, due to the COVID-19 outbreak and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this Board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. The ZBA is utilizing a telephone conference line for this electronic meeting. The public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following telephone number: (603) 766-5646. Again, I'll repeat that: (603) 766-5646, and use the participating code 785645, followed by the pound sign. Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, the Town previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using the available telephone number with the posted agenda. Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem with telephone access, please call (603) 384-3624. Again, that number, if you have a problem with telephone access, please call (603) 384-3624. And adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. So we're going to start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. And when each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law. So we will start with Len.
I am here, and there is no one in the room with me.
Thank you. Sandra?
I am here, and no one is in the room with me.
Thank you. Denise?
I am here, and no one is in the room with me.
Alan?
I'm here, and I'm with the dog.
Okay. And John?
That was going to be my line. I'm here, no one with me but the dog.
Thank you. And I'm Gail LeBrecq. I'm the Chairman of the Board. So welcome to the meeting. A little bit of introduction here. The Goffstown Zoning Board is an elected board of five members and up to five appointed alternates. Currently, the Board does have five elected members and one alternate. So if anybody's interested in serving on the ZBA, you can contact Nancy Larson at Town Hall for more information. The Board has a posted agenda for each meeting and intends to follow the items in order. The Board will open the public hearing on an application to receive testimony from applicants, from abutters, and affected parties, and ask questions about the appeal. The public hearing will be closed, and the Board will enter into a deliberative session to discuss the merits of the appeal. Those who do want to make public comment will come forward, sit at the table. Nope, nope, they won't be doing that. We can leave that part out. I do want to explain, though, that any abutters or interested parties who are on the line will be muted until the public hearing is opened, until the hearing is open to the public for you to comment, at which time you will do the raise-your-hand process that the Town Administrator explained to you. And you will state your name and address for the record as well. For each application, the Board will decide to approve, approve with conditions, deny or continue to a later meeting. And you're welcome to watch the deliberations this evening, or you can contact Nancy Larson at Town Hall to get results. Any motion made must have an affirmative vote of at least three members. An applicant can request a continuance if there's not a full five-member board to act on an application. Tonight, we do have that full five-member board, so it shouldn't be an issue. And if you are aggrieved by a decision made by the ZBA tonight, you have the right to appeal to the Superior Court. However, before appealing to Superior Court, you must request a rehearing with this Board to preserve your right to appeal. Rehearing requests must be filed within 30 days of the decision and state all reasons why the decision was unlawful or unreasonable. And failure to request a rehearing may forfeit your ability to appeal to Superior Court. And one last thing before we get started. Rules of procedure, I can't talk tonight, state that the Chair shall be elected in April. And being that this is our April meeting, and we really weren't planning for it, I'm going to propose that I continue as Chair for this meeting, and we can elect the Chair at the end of the meeting. Are you okay with that, Board members?
Yes, I'm okay with that. This is Sam.
Okay.
Denise is fine with that.
Len, yes, I approve.
Okay.
Alan, fine.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So the first order of business that we have tonight is the approval of the minutes to the ZBA meeting of March 3rd. Do we have either a motion to approve or corrections?
Gail, I will move that the minutes be approved and submitted.
Thank you.
I'm second. This is Denise.
Thank you. And all in favor? Roll call vote, please. Len?
Okay. Yes?
Denise?
Yes.
Alan?
Yeah.
Sandra?
Yeah.
And me. So the vote carries 5-0, unanimous. Minutes are approved. Okay. Our first public hearing is Daniel LaPointe, applicant, and Lucille Burke owner, seek a variance to build a two-family house on a proposed lot that will not meet the lot-size requirements for construction of a two-family house. This concerns Section 4.3 Table of Dimensional Regulations of the Goffstown Zoning Ordinance. The property is located at 34 Hague Street, MAP 16, Lot 8, and Proposed Lot 8-1. It's zoned residential 2. Can I have a motion regarding regional impact, please?
Alan, here, so move.
Thank you, Alan. And second?
Second.
Thank you, Len. All in favor, roll call vote. Alan?
Aye.
Len?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Denise?
Aye.
And I say aye. So that's all in favor, unanimous 5-0. Thank you very much. And do we have Daniel LaPointe or Lucille Burke on the phone?
I am seeing one individual raise their hand with a cellphone ending 0707. Did you have a question?
No, I just wanted to be able to comment when the timer is approved.
Okay. Is there anybody on the phone for applicants Daniel LaPointe and Lucille Burke?
Derek?
Yes.
Derek, it's Nancy. So I indicated to Joe Wickert, the surveyor, and to Dan LaPointe, the applicant, that they would be receiving a phone call from you. I apologize if I got that wrong.
That's okay. Which one should I call?
Well, probably Joe Wickert. His number?
I've got it.
47.
No, I've got Nancy. I've got it.
Are they in the parking lot to come in?
No.
Oh, okay.
Hi, Joe. This is Derek Horn. We are ready for the LaPointe application on Hague Street. So if you could call in, and I can also give Daniel LaPointe a call to have him call in. Yes, the number on the agenda and the participant code, yes. Thanks.
Hi, this is Daniel LaPointe. This is Derek Horn at Town Hall in Goffstown. We're ready for your ZBA application. I've already talked to Joe Wickert, and he's calling in for the number. Do you have the number to call it to?
Yes. And then you'll just put in the participation code when you get on the line. 785-645, and then you put in the pound sign. Okay? Thank you. All right. We do have Joe Wickert on the line.
Hi, Joe. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Are you ready to start? You want to tell us about your application?
Sure. So, for the record, I'm Joe Wickert, and Mr. LaPointe, Dan LaPointe, who I believe Derek is calling now, filled out the application. But we did the subdivision plan for the property. So Dan had asked us to kind of answer any questions that come up, type of thing. So a general overview of what it is, is Lucille Burke owns Lot 8 on TIGMAP 16. Her residence is 34 Hague Street, and that's on the subject property. And we went to the zoning, we went to the planning board in March, and we have conditional approval to create a new building lot at the end of the road. The new lot is going to be 16,672 square feet. And it has, it has a total of 187 foot of frontage. So there is an 1,800-square-foot turnaround easement to the town. So there's a thumb on the Burke property, and that's a, you know, there's a dedicated easement to the town for that turnout area. So the proposal that the planning board approved conditionally was to create a new building lot. Under the R2 ordinance, we would need half an acre to put a duplex on the property. We only have, you know, and a half an acre is 21,700-something. I haven't written down here. So, but the, so we're short by about 5,100 square feet. Under the zoning ordinance, the way it's written up, we have to exclude, we have to exclude the area of the turnout easement, which is 1,800 square feet. So that means that the proposed lot is 6,908 square feet, undersized as to what's required in the ordinance to be a complying duplex lot, which is the reason we're here in front of the ZBA. So, you know, this area is zoned R2. Two-family dwellings are allowed by right with the proper area. The density schedule has changed in the not-so-distant past. So there are others, there are some other lots in the neighborhood that are smaller than what's proposed. There's one larger that's what's proposed in the neighborhood that are two-family lots. I believe the lot can sustain a two-family dwelling. We have, on the plan that was submitted, we have an exhibit for a 35-by-60 duplex, and we have a driveway on either side of the building. That second driveway would be subject to a conditional use permit. We had that application, is pending with the planning board. But as they approved the subdivision conditionally, we tabled the request for the conditional use permit for the second driveway until we found out what the results of the variance would be. So should, for some reason, if the variance were to be approved and the conditional use permit were to be denied, the applicant can certainly make it work with one driveway. We just put it on one side of the house or the other and shift the house over. So I think Dan, in his, in Dan's packet, he'd kind of gone through and, you know, kind of addressed the criteria. But, you know, I think just a brief summary is that, you know, this lot's unique. It butts up to a large multifamily development property. Like we mentioned, there's some other two-family houses in the neighborhood. As part of this subdivision, there is going to be a significant cost, infrastructure cost. So, you know, the existing sewer main ends approximately at 34 Hague Street. So we have to replace the existing manhole because DPW has said that that's in poor condition. And because the sewer and water lines are already too close, you know, the existing lines are too close, they have to, the engineer had to put a new manhole to kind of jog away so we could maintain the 10-foot separation. So we actually, in order to do this, we, you know, we've got three sewer manholes. We have a decent amount of sewer main extension. We also have to extend the water main service because it ends currently at the proposed lot line. And Manchester Water Works, as a general policy, requires that the water main be extended to the end of your property when doing a subdivision. So the proposal we have would be subject to a waiver by the Water Works Commission. One of the reasons why we've gone to where we are is, I believe, if you look on the plan, Lot 14 on TIGMAP 16, it's a 100-foot-wide lot, but it's 200 feet deep, so it goes all the way down to Pershing Street. So I believe the infrastructure is being extended that far out, as much to service the applicant's property, but also to provide that should the other lot ever be divided, the infrastructure would already be there. So I think in a nutshell, that kind of covers the basic presentation, and then if you have any questions, I think either Dan or I could try to answer them for you.
Okay. Board members, do you guys have any questions?
I do. I haven't seen this.
Can you identify yourself, please?
I'm sorry. This is Sandra Parker, and I'm a member of the ZBA, and I'm asking if on Hague Street, if I understand correctly, if they were not required to give the easement to the town, they would already have the required square footage.
They wouldn't.
They would not?
No.
Hold on a minute.
You listen.
Hold on. Sandra, you want to go ahead and finish?
Evidently not, because I was just told I didn't know what I was talking about.
That's okay. Go ahead and finish. We want to hear it.
Let's be simple, people. I was having been on this lot and having seen that easement, when he said they were short, I believe it was 600 square feet, and they needed, they had 21, 7, 8, 0 square feet, that it was partially due to the easement that was granted to the town, because they can't add that square footage in.
This is Denise. Can I make a comment, please?
Sure.
Sandra, I think you're going at the 27,000 with the total lot before they subdivided it. Once they subdivided it, it became 16,672 with an easement area of 1,800 square feet and a buildable area of 14,872.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So if you look on the, that's fine, on the first page of the plan, in the top, you'll see a square, and that information will be there.
Okay. I do see that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else have comments or questions?
... area of 50 and a buildable area of 14,000.
Any ZBA members that have comment?
Are there any ZBA members who have comments and questions?
First page of the plan, in the top, you'll see.
Who's the speaking, please?
This is your head.
Okay. Let's try this a different way. Len, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, let me ask, let me ask one. Absentance, the building as proposed would meet all the required setbacks for the zone, yes?
This is Joe Wickert. So yes, I believe the building as shown on the plan would comply with the zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
Is that it? Len, any others? Any other questions from you?
I, oh.
Len?
None, no more from me.
Denise?
I have a question. He stated that the zoning has changed recently. When has it changed and what was it at that time for a two-family?
So this is Joe Wickert again. My, to recollection, I want to say in the last five years-ish, and I thought it used to be we were allowed eight per acre, but I'm not 100% certain. It was either six or eight per acre.
This is Nancy Larson. It used to be eight, and Joe is correct. I forget how many years ago it changed. It may have even been less than five years ago. And the confusion that everybody seems to have is, prior to this table being revised, the density number was eight dwelling units per buildable acre. And then when the zoning changed and that density number was reduced, the number eight actually became a footnote eight, as it just so happens. So that added to some confusion. And footnote eight has a different density requirement. So it's, yeah, so that has added to the confusion. It's now four dwelling units per acre of total buildable area where it used to be eight.
Okay. Thanks, Nancy.
You're welcome.
Okay. Denise, did you have any additional questions?
Not at this time.
Okay. Alan?
I'm on the phone.
You're all set? John?
I'm on the phone.
Thank you. John, do you have any additional or any questions?
No, Len asked the one I was going to ask. I'm good.
Okay. John, I like to get the criteria for the variance or special exception into the record. Do you have that with you to read it into the record, or would you prefer I do that?
I do not, I'm sorry, this is Joe Wickert. I do not have a copy of it here. I don't know if Dan does, so it might be just as, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, if you could read it in.
I don't mind. Now you're going for a variance and a special exception, right?
That's correct. This is Dan.
Hi, Dan. Okay. The...
Excuse me, Chairman Gail?
Yeah.
The, I had to correct the application cover sheet and crossed out special exception. That was never required.
Okay.
And Dan was instructed by me to only apply for the variance.
Okay.
It was, he was under the impression at some point in time that the two driveways, the extra driveway that is proposed, that doesn't frontage for the proposed lot, would require a special exception, but that's not the case. It actually requires a conditional use permit from the planning board. So my staff report only addresses the variance request.
Okay. That's good. Thank you for letting us know that. Okay. So I will read the applicant's response to his request for the variance. And he said that it would not be contrary to the public interest because the neighborhood is zoned residential 2 and duplexes already exist there. The spirit of the ordinance is observed because the proposed structure would fit within the setbacks and also match the neighborhood. It would do substantial justice because, due to the lot abutting a large multi-unit building, a single-family home will not have its full potential resale value. The values of surrounding properties will not be diminished because two-family already exist in the neighborhood. And regarding hardship, he said it's the only lot with a piece of land that is deeded to the town for the use to turn around. The proposed use is reasonable because a two-family will blend in also and is zoned R2. It's also the last lot on a dead-end street. Other lots with two driveways, Lot 16-10, Lot 1642, and Lot 16-1, 66-1. And additional information, if A is not established, criteria B says, "Due to the turnaround, a single-family home would not be so desirable." How many people actually have that? So we have, we have those. Do you have anything else to add, John, or Joe, or Dan?
Dan, do you have anything?
I just feel that to, I guess, get the best value for everyone, including the town as far as net value of property and things like that, that a two-family just fits well there because of the circumstances with this particular lot. And where it already exists, it's certainly not harming anything because the building, you know, the last two-family I put up was in the vicinity of 375,000, and that's certainly not going to hurt that neighborhood. So that's, I think that's probably one of the big things. And then obviously, the reason why I'm kind of like heavily trying to get this...
And Dan was instructed by me to only apply for the variance.
Okay.
It was, it, he was under the impression at some point in time that the, the two driveways, the extra driveway that is proposed, that doesn't frontage for the proposed lot, would require a special exception, but that's not the case. It actually requires a conditional use permit from the planning board. So, so my staff report only addresses the variance request.
Okay, that's good. Thank you for, for letting us know that. Okay, so I will read the...
You're welcome.
The applicant's response to his request for the variance, and he said that it would not be contrary to the public interest because the neighborhood is zoned residential to, and duplexes already exist there. The spirit of the ordinance is observed because the proposed structure would fit within the setbacks and also match the neighborhood. It would do substantial justice because due to the lot abutting a large multi-unit building, a single-family home will not have its full potential resale value. The values of surrounding properties will not be diminished because two-family already exist in the neighborhood. And regarding hardship, he said it's the only lot with a piece of land that is deeded to the town for the use to turn around. The proposed use is reasonable because a two-family will blend in also and is zoned R2. It's also the last lot on a dead-end street. Other lots with two driveways, Lot 16-10, Lot 1642, and Lot 16-1, 66-1. And additional information, if A is not established, criteria B says, "Due to the turnaround, a single-family home would not be so desirable." How many people actually have that? So we have, we have those. Do you have anything else to add, John, or Joe, or Dan?
Dan, do you have anything?
I just feel that to, to, I guess, get the best value for everyone, including the town as far as net value of property and things like that, that a, a two-family just fits well there because of the circumstances with this particular lot, and the, where it already exists, it's certainly not harming anything because the building, you know, the last two-family I put up was in the vicinity of 375,000, and that's certainly not going to hurt that neighborhood. So that's, I, I think that's probably one of the big things, and then obviously, the reason why I'm kind of like heavily trying to get this for this particular parcel is, is basically because of the turnaround there. I know that it has great value to the town as far as, you know, helping with the, with the garbage runs and plowing and maintenance and all of that, because it is a dead-end street. But that being said, there's, it's, it's kind of hard to sell a house with that right there. Versus a two-family, it can be a nice stepping stone for an owner-occupied home that is a young family, that wants to go to a good school system, and that could continue on. So, and that, there's my general thought on, on, on really why I think it's kind of important that we try to pass it on, on that particular note, you know? And I know getting ahead of myself a little bit, the, the two driveways keeps peace between tenants. They each shovel their own thing, kids don't bang in cars, there is no traffic going by.
The two, the two dri, the two dri...
As far as backing up, you know?
Uh, Dan, the two driveways are an issue of the planning board, however, with the conditional use permit.
Okay.
So you don't have to convince us.
Sounds good, thank you. I apologize.
No, no problem. Does the board have any further questions or comment?
Did we do, did we do, did we do impact? Excuse me?
Did we do?
This is Alan.
Yes, we did. You made the motion.
Alan?
You made the motion, and Len seconded. So we're all set there. Any, any further questions over the board?
This is Len, nothing more from me at this time.
Denise?
I'm all set, thank you.
Sandra?
I'm all set, thank you.
Alan?
I'm all set.
John?
I'm good, thanks.
Okay, at this point, we're going to open the application to the public if there are any abutters or interested parties who want to make a comment. You, given the instructions you hit...
If anyone, any abutters of the public want to make comment, please dial *9. They'll alert us that you want to make a comment. You will hear your line be unmuted. When it's unmuted, please identify yourself, first and last name, and also provide your address for the record. So again, you would alert pressing *9.
If anyone, any abutters of the public want to make comment, please dial *9. They'll alert us if you want to make any comment.
Anybody calling in?
They'll hear your line. There, there are some abutters, and I know they made some comment. Okay, we do have...
...and also provide your address for the record.
Again, please identify yourself. I just unmuted a line in telephone ending 5668. Please identify yourself and your address for the record.
Absolutely, my name is Salen Nwari. I live at 31 Hague Street.
Could you tell me your name again and spell it, please?
Absolutely, S.A.L.E.N., first name. Last name is Nwari, N.O.U.E.I.R.I.
Thank you.
So I have a few questions and comments in regards to this build. One was, it sounded like there was multiple two-family houses on the street. I'm only aware of one. So based off, I believe it was Mr. Wicker's comments, it sounded like there was multiple that you would blend in perfectly, but for the most part, out of this whole entire street, there's only one multifamily house. Also had a few questions in regards to why it would be hard to sell a single-family home in Gothstown. I mean, this place is booming. It's the reason why I moved here two years ago. There'd be zero issues, and I understand the benefits of having two families for the town of Gothstown, but I think the benefits would be more for the builders, for profit, not so much the current residents on the street. I currently live towards the end of the street, and it's wonderful because it's only three cars that drive by my house. Now with a multifamily, I'd be looking at a total of nine cars driving by my house. Just overall looking at it, and that's pretty much all I had. Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you. And who do we have next?
Right now, I don't see anyone else. Are there any other abutters or members of the public that wish to comment on this? Okay, we do have one. I will open up that line now. Telephone ending 0707. Please identify yourself and your address.
Hello, my name is Carlton Merely. I live at 35 Hague Street. I built a single-family home in 1987. My wife and I have lived here for 37 years. First, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address Madam Chair and the Honorable Board. I respectfully request that this application for variance be denied for the following reasons. One, it will not meet the lot size requirement. The existing home on that property sets back six feet from the road. It doesn't, that, the existing home on the property to be subdivided does not meet the current standards. If you allow this to go through, I live directly across the street from two properties that neither meet the conditional regulations of the day. The purpose of the variance ordinances, the purpose of the ordinances are to protect and promote the public safety, convenience, comfort, and I draw attention to aesthetics in the terms. I'd also like to say that the ordinance also state that no use be made of any lot that may become an excessive annoyance or nuisance to the other properties. This is a for-profit endeavor and not a hardship. The property would be perfect for a single-family home. My home, my neighbors' homes are all single-family homes, and they're beautiful. The two-family homes that are on the street have, have driveways that are two-car deep, single-car wide, and those, and those types of driveways encourage people to park on the street. Our Hague Street is narrow. In the area where this proposed development is, is only approximately 18 feet wide. With cars, street parking on that end, it's very difficult and most often impossible for emergency vehicles to traverse up the road while vehicles are parked on the side. Living at the end of the street, I'm the last person who drives down the street, and several times every year, I've got to stop and mow out and ask my neighbors to please move their cars because my own pickup won't fit down the street. I also like to draw attention to the numerous calls for police for drug and other illegal activities at the end of the street. There've been numerous arrests and multiple drug overdoses from tenants that resulted in deaths, not homeowners. We are entitled to improvements at the end of the street. I know there's a hammerhead turnaround. Before that was built, all the utility vehicles used to turn around in our driveway. The road ended right adjacent to our driveway. I built this home there knowing that. I have a beautiful home, almost 3,000 square feet. We love our neighborhood, but we need an improvement. A single-family home across the street would be a great improvement. And with all the other undersized lot, almost 30%, subject to waivers, I don't see how the town should, would enable this waiver to be approved. So again, I respectfully request that you deny this waiver, and I'm fully encouraged to support a single-family home at the end of the street. Thank you. Respectfully submitted.
Thank you. Joe, Joe, or Dan, do you have any comments regarding the, the abutters comment?
Sure. This is Joe. I'll start, and then I can let Dan kind of take over some of it. So Mr. Nwari, it spoke about whether there were multiple, or, so the proposal is to just one two-family dwelling. So that's the only structure that would be on the new lot should the variance be approved. So it's just one two-family dwelling. I'll go into the hardship when I go into Mr. Bradley's, just because we can handle them both at the same, kind of at the same time. So Mr. Bradley had mentioned that, you know, we're not going to meet the lot size. He's correct, which is the reason why we're in front of the ZBA. He also mentioned that the existing house doesn't meet the setbacks, which the existing house predates the ordinance, so the only, the only setback that the, the existing house has to comply with is the side yard setback to the new lot line, which it does. And then, you know, there were, there was discussion over different driveway, having two driveways is going to encourage parking on the street and, you know, the police calls to the end of the street. So, you know, I, I believe part of the reason why, make it as an assumption, so I'm, I'm prefacing my remarks by saying it's an assumption, but, you know, it's, it's probably a fact that people can park in that thumb in the turnaround area. It's sort of an isolated area away from the houses and do whatever. So in, in theory, once there is a lot, once there, that lot is built on, hopefully, that problem will, will be reduced. And then, you know, in regards to the, you know, in regards to the driveways and parking, you know, that's a function of the planning board, so I'm not going to get into a bunch of detail on that, but certainly, you know, we, whether it's one or two driveways, I believe the driveways are going to be long enough to accommodate more than the required two vehicles, even though by ordinance, it's two vehicles. So I'll go into briefly what I think, you know, the relevant parts to the, to the hardship bar, and then Dan can add in with what he wants. But, so I look at it and say, he's correct. We can, we can develop this as a single-family lot, but I think, you know, the, the requirement for a hardship has been somewhat softened, and it's more a, a function of, you know, what's unique about the property? Are we going to comply with the other parts of, of the questionnaire? So I think what's unique about this property is, you know, one of the main things is, is it does abut a large multifamily neighborhood. So as Dan mentioned, it's, it's probably difficult to develop this lot with a large single-family home that's going to be overlooking the multifamily, the apartments condos next door. And I, and I forgot, just while I'm thinking about it, Mr. Nwari had mentioned additional two-family. So I think he's correct, there's only one on Hague Street, but diagonally northeast of 34 Hague Street, off on the south side of Joffrey Street, there's a two-family, and there are some other two-families on the north side of Joffrey Street. So in addition to the, you know, getting back to what's unique in the hardship, you know, we do have, you know, we have the, the issue of, we butt up to the, to the multifamily. We also have the issue of, you know, the infrastructure cost, which, you know, might be a problem to make it viable for a single-family house. We're not quite sure yet because we haven't had, we haven't had the Water Works to see if they're going to approve the waiver request on the length of the water service. You know, and I think, I think what, well, one of the items that is unique is you have an area, you have a neighborhood that's an older neighborhood, that predominantly up until so many years ago, this would have been allowed by right. So I understand that it's not allowed by right now, but it is one of those items that, you know, whatever, however we want to phrase it, whether it be timing or whatever, that, and that's a decision that, you know, the zoning board would have to make. So I think I, that's, I, I think I addressed the comments I had written down. I'll let Dan address the remainder.
Thank you.
Um, I, Joe, you did a nice job. Thanks for covering that very well, actually. The, the, like I said earlier, the, the main reason for proposing the two-family is, is the hardship with the, the, the big apartment building there, and for me, that, I think that, I just don't know anybody that, you know, that lives in a, we'll say, a brand-new $380,000 single-family home that has a town turnaround probably 30 feet from the corner of his home. It, it just takes out of the front yard, it takes out of the decor, and, and that's, and that's my main reason on, on how I, I think that this kind of like solves that problem. I can still get a beautiful-looking building in there with three bedrooms or two bedrooms and, you know, provide a good place to, to live for a nice owner-occupied structure. And like I say, the last, last two-family I built was like 375, and that's not demoting the neighborhood. That, it, you know, those, most of the houses down that street are, you know, within that realm or thereabouts, and so it, it's certainly just joining the neighborhood and not really taking it down.
Okay.
In my view.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Board members, do you have any additional comments or questions?
No comments from Denise.
Len?
Nothing at this time.
Alan?
All set.
Sandra?
Nothing at this time.
John?
No questions.
Okay, are we ready for a motion, or deliberations at least?
Close the public hearing.
Ah, yes. Thank you, Alan. The public hearing is now closed.
Okay, I'd be happy to get started.
And who's this?
This is Denise.
Okay, go ahead Denise.
Okay, this is it. This, this subdivision just occurred, so I can't in any way see how there's any hardship. They created a, they took one lot, made two. They can put a one-family house, there's one-family house right across the street. That's beautiful. Don't see how this would come into play at all for a variance.
Can you, can you justify that with the variance criteria?
Give me a moment.
I will.
If they'll pull out that, um, for... Well, there's nothing unusual about the lot. I understand that he's talking about the hammerhead turnaround, but they knew that when they subdivided it. It was, it's subdivided to put a one-family home, which is what would fit on that lot. So it's a brand-new subdivision. You can't create a brand-new subdivision for something that doesn't work. And, and a home does fit into it, and to me, there's absolutely no hardship here. And it doesn't look like it's going to do a benefit to the neighborhood. May not be do a disservice, but it's not going to do a benefit to the, the neighborhood. And I don't see why they can't put a single-family home. And I just, that's just my opinion. It's a brand-new subdivision, just this year.
So is that your motion?
No, it was my opinion.
Your opinion, okay. Any other comments from the board members?
Alan here.
Alan, go ahead.
Um, we've, we've seen many instances in this R2 zone, its applications for duplexes on lots that are smaller than this. And it's serviced by sewer and water. This hasn't been the case all the time. I just think that it's a, the two-family is, is shown on the subdivision plan. The planning board has seen it. I don't see any comment from the planning board that says that it's not, that they don't agree with the application. So I, I would, and I see that it meets the criteria for granting the, the variance. Um, no.
Is, is that...
No comment.
Is that a comment or emotion? Is that a comment or a motion?
Not a motion.
Okay. Len, do you have com...
I concur rather fully with Alan's comments. I believe that he covered it, and I see things in quite the same light.
Okay, thank, thank you. Sandra?
Um, I'm going to have to go with Alan on this one. It, it looks to me that they do have a two-family on this street. Would it negatively impact this street? I don't believe so. At, at least in the, what I have in front of me indicates they give it, you know, a lot of thought in, to how they're placing it on the property and, you know, trying to give it two driveways instead of one. So, um, I, I know that it comes down to wants and needs in this one, and I just have to say that if, you know, if we look at this, this is not something beyond what we can do.
Okay.
Can I make one last?
Oh, hold on. Hold on.
I'm here. I think that it does present, if you look at it, there are a couple of special conditions which I do think would be a drawback to a single-family property, including the large development nearby. Having lived near a town turnaround for a number of years, they tend to be large and noisy, and I just think that... they tend to be large and noisy, and, um, I just think that, um, let me, let me convert this into a motion. I will move that the variance be approved as requested, with the staff recommended condition of recording of the final subdivision plan and, uh, conditional use permit for a second driveway before, uh, building permits.
Okay.
That is by Alan.
Thank you. Okay, so we have the motion and the second from Len and Alan. Um, we're going to do a roll call vote. Um, Len?
Can there be discussion first?
Oh, yes, sure, go ahead Denise.
Okay, so I pulled out my request for variance and all my criteria, and I just want to go through it very quickly.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, number one, not contrary to the public interest. Well, two neighbors across the street would expect to differ with that, they would say that it does, it is contrary to their interest. In the spirit of the ordinance, I agree that we have given, um, smaller lots, um, variances to create a duplex, but not a lot that was created from a, um, a single-family home, subdivided into two lots. Um, and because of that, I think it would, um, granting the variance would not do substantial justice to those neighbors, the surrounding, um, properties would be diminished. And as far as the hardship goes, you can put a single-family home, this is not a piece of land that we're saying that they cannot develop, we're saying that we would be happy to develop. Our argument is always with two families, that it's somebody like a single-family home that has some rental income. So, it's the same type of people that buy single-family homes, we've always said that when people are so against two families. So, you can't have it both ways, um, with that argument, just my thoughts going through the criteria.
Okay, thank you. Uh, John? Do you have comments?
Well, I kind of agree with Denise a bit, in that there are people, the neighbors, don't think it's a good idea, and they, they feel like they're going to be adversely affected. And they did go to the trouble to show up and, and express that point of view. And the fact that it was subdivided, it was one lot before, and somebody decided they were going to subdivide it, and then come in later to ask for a two-family variance. But I'm not voting tonight, so I'm okay.
Okay. Um, any, from anybody else over there? I'm going to put, pardon, go ahead.
This is, um, I just have a, a problem with the, with the, uh, the comment that it's a ideal place, but wouldn't that turnaround, with the adjacent properties being the developer, I think it's off of Daniel Plummer Road?
It's off of what?
Off of Master.
That, the multi, not a multi-family, it's a boxer slot on the opposite side, on the, on the east, right? Is it a multi-
This is, uh, yeah, this is Nancy, Alan, you're correct, Country Squire Estates is off of, uh, Daniel Plummer Road.
Okay. So, so it's not like there's, uh, not multi-families, these are townhouses, and there's a hundred of them in there probably, I don't, I don't know. So, you know, I, I, um, and, and the fact that most of these lots that Denise was talking about, were created by subdivision, not, not in the last months, but in the last few years, they were all created by subdivision. Um, so I, I, I don't consider that to be a, a, a point of concern, the fact that it's recent.
Yeah. I'm, I'm not concerned about the hardship criteria, I do think that it meets that, because even though they knew about it when they subdivided, um, that's not the issue, the issue is, what their, is their proposed use a reasonable one? Um, it's, the, the variance is on the use that they are requesting, not what they could have requested, or what they, they might have done otherwise, but the variance request is based on what they are requesting. So, um, just because they knew about it, any applicant, or any property owner is going to know about the hardships on the property when they purchase it, that's presumed. Um, and so, they, when they come with a proposed use, that's what we, we go by, not by what they could be doing instead. Um, and I do believe that there is a hardship with the multi-family development, development right there, and also with the turnaround as well. Um, so I, I tend to lean more towards Len and Alan's opinions, myself. Um, do we have, do we have any other comments, before we take a vote? No other comments? Okay, then we're going to take it, and we'll do a roll call vote. Um, Len?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Uh, Denise? Your vote please?
Sorry, no.
Okay, Sandra Parker?
Aye.
And I say yes, as well. So, the vote passed, uh, the, the variance request is granted four to one. Thank you all. Thank you, Joe, and thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
Okay. We, we are going on to our next application, who is? Richard Fletcher, owner-applicant seeking a special exception to convert an existing living area of a single-family home into an accessory dwelling unit. This concerns Section 5.2 of the Gophstown zoning ordinance. The property is located at 23 Hoyt Road, MAP 11, Lot 17-3, zoned agricultural. Um, Mr. Fletcher is here in the meeting room with us, and would you like to come sit up here at the board, at the table, please?
I'm not, I'm not, everything that I'm hearing right now is breaking up.
Who's this? Is this John?
No, this is, uh, Robert Boudreau. I, I can't, it, it's like you're saying things, and I'm, I'm getting them in pieces.
And, Mr. Boudreau, are you an abutter to this property, or an interested party in this, in this?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Let's, we'll continue on a little bit, and then we'll see if it straightens up?
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have, um-
Alan here.
Yes, Alan?
I have to recuse myself, as Mr. Fletcher is a client of mine.
Okay. So, John, then you will be appointed as a voting alternate, please?
I have to recuse myself, I'm an abutter.
Okay, so, we have, um, a four-member board, instead of a five, and you will need three of these, this four-member board, to be able to vote in favor of your application, should you choose to go forward. Otherwise, you can choose to continue your application to another time, Mr. Fletcher. What would you prefer to do?
I choose to continue my application at this time.
Okay. The, the record will reflect that. And so, John and Alan, shall we mute them?
Yes, I've muted ZBA member Alan Eaton and ZBA alternate John Wilt, as they've both recused themselves from this-
Okay, thank you.
-application.
All right, so, Mr. Fletcher, would you tell us about your application, please?
Um, yes, I'm looking to, um, convert an existing space in my home. Um, I'm calling it an accessory dwelling, it's approximately 800 square feet, just simply to add, add another unit, um, the ability to, to rent out a part of my home, maybe to help, help pay the taxes, help, help with the mortgage. And I, I was under the understanding, it was an, a, a loud use through a law that was passed by Maggie Hassan in 2017, to make it easy for people to add accessory dwellings to their home without having to go through a lot of red tape to do it. So, um, I chose to take that route, to simply add another unit to my portfolio, and here I am to do that.
So, you're not adding on to the footprint of, of your house?
No, I'm not.
You're just using the existing space?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Um, does the board have any questions of the applicant? Len?
Not at this time.
Denise?
Not at this time.
Sandra?
Not at this time.
Okay, um, wow. Okay, um, now, uh, the staff has recommended some conditions?
Okay.
And I want to know, uh, if you, have you reviewed them yourself?
I have.
That you'll secure any or permits to legitimize that second kitchen?
Correct.
Where is the second kitchen, please?
Um, well, it's, the second kitchen is where-
I'm still not hearing everything being said.
Okay, hold on.
Uh, Mr. Boudreau, are you calling from a cell phone or a landline?
Landline.
Okay. I can, um, we can speak up a little bit, I have the phone, the conference phone at the highest input volume at this point.
Okay.
And, uh, no other members of the public have indicated that there was an issue with the phone line, so we'll, we'll try and speak up a bit.
Okay.
Okay, so, would you, and we'll speak up for the, for the abutter?
Certainly.
If you would, tell us about the kitchen.
I'm adding, um, another kitchen to the first floor of my home.
Now, that the staff review says that there's already a second kitchen there.
There, it, it was where the kitchen used to be when, when the house was down on the road 18 years ago.
Okay. So, you will have a second kitchen, and it will get all the necessary permits, so you'll only have the two kitchens?
Correct.
Okay. Then the other, the other, um, potential condition would be to, uh, before issuance of any required, required permits or occupancy, uh, the new septic design for the existing home shall be approved by the DES, and installed if required by DES.
Yes, and that's been already completed by Meridian, I have the paperwork on that, that's been done.
Okay. Okay. Um, do you have, you don't have-
Sorry, Dale?
Well, go ahead.
There was a comment about a fire door for separation.
Fire door for separation?
Yes, I actually have, uh, yes, I plan to install one as well.
You do plan to install a fire door for separation?
Yep, yes.
Okay. Is that okay for you, Denise?
That's fine, thank you.
Okay. Now, the staff report also says that you're going to need a variance to exceed the permitted 800 square feet, because of the porches? The porches count in the square footage of the 800?
Well, outside the living area.
Okay. Uh, Nancy?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
This is Nancy, can I-
Hold, hold on just a minute, Nancy. Okay, go ahead Nancy.
Okay. Uh, this is Nancy, I wanted to clarify, or, or, um, respectfully, uh, uh, correct your statement. Uh, in my staff report, it's, the square footage it's proposed is about 772-
Yep.
-square feet. And, um, I make a comment in my staff report, it's item number three on page two of four, that the applicant is aware that the existing screened-in porches slash decks adjacent to the proposed accessory dwelling unit on the first floor and second floor cannot be converted into additional living space, even as a three-season room, without granting of a variance by the zoning board, because it would exceed the 800 square feet allowed. So, I apologize if I created any confusion by that statement. Mr. Fletcher is not planning to, uh, convert any of those porches or, um, or decks, and it's just a conversation that he and I had, and I just wanted to make sure that all of you understand that, uh, he and I did have that conversation, and that it's perfectly clear in my staff report, and his, and his, uh, you know, the approval, if, if the board does approve it, um, that it, it does not include conversion of, of either the, the decks or porches.
Okay, thank you Nancy.
You're welcome.
Okay, does the board have any further questions or comments?
Len, at this time.
Okay. Uh, Denise?
Not at this time.
Sandra?
Not at this time.
Okay. Um, I'm going to read the applicant's, uh, application, the comments that he has to his special exception request, I'll read those into the minutes. Um, "This specific site is an appropriate location for such use, being consistent with the town's current master plan, because state law allows accessory buildings as long as I meet all town requirements. The size or frequency of the use will not significantly alter the neighborhood, because there are no additions being made to the footprint of the existing layout. No outside alterations will be made to the existing footprint or layout. The use will not create a nuisance or hazard to vehicles or pedestrians in a manner that cannot be ameliorated, because this will only create traffic on my private driveway by one or two people, far less than the 22 houses just approved across the street on Hoyt Road. The proposed location is of sufficient size to allow for adequate and appropriate facilities for the proper operation of the use, because the lot size is 14 acres. The proposed location is of sufficient size to allow for appropriate buffers of this use to adjacent properties, because there's more than enough of a buffer in all four directions on his 14-acre parcel. Other issues and matters the applicant deems relevant are, saying, 'Providing I meet the criteria of the ability of building a new septic system if needed, it's a state law passed June 2017, that any single-family home can be converted into a, a, an accessory dwelling, regardless of acres and frontage on a town road.'" So, that is what we have. I'm going to, oh, does the board have any additional comments? Len?
Not at this time.
Denise?
I'm all set, thank you.
Sandra?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open the hearing to the public for comment at this time, and, um, Derek, is there anybody on the line for public comment?
Is there anyone wishing to make public comment? If so, please identify yourself, first and last name, and your address.
Robert Boudreau, 589 Blackbrook Road.
Okay, Mr. Boudreau, what do you have to tell us?
Okay, as far as I recall, this, this area here is all agricultural area, there is not supposed to be dual-family homes, or, uh, other people living in, in the house being rented. Uh, to my right, we do have a duplex, but that was illegally built, and the town allowed the, um, the owner to build it, instead of tear it down. So, next to us is the only two-family home that we have. Everybody else around here, including Hoyt Road, um, and, um, Blackbrook Road, is all single-family houses.
Okay, thank you.
And, and one other thing, uh, a few years back, our, um, abutting neighbors to my left, requested to have an in-law apartment put, there wasn't enough zoning to allow them to do it, but, uh, we, we agreed to allow them to do it, because they had, um, a mother that they wanted, give her a mother-in-law apartment, and it was on the condition that it would not be rented to the general public. Well, the mother either died or moved away, and then the couple started renting the place out to other people. And that was what we were fearing. We didn't want any other people making it a two-family home. So, that, that, um, in-law apartment is now being rented out.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Anything else?
Well, again, I mean, he's, he's far enough away from me that I really don't have a problem per se. The only problem is, that I see, is if, for whatever reason, you start renting it out to anybody and everybody, then the next thing you know, you're going to want to subdivide all the land and start building, you know, other units and everything.
Okay, thank you. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Denise?
Not at this time.
Sandra?
Not at this time.
Len?
I think just based on the abutter's comments, I believe that was the reason for the change in state law on accessory dwelling units, was to deal with the problem of illegally constructed law apartments. This, I think, gives the town a little more overview on what is going on in the housing stock, and, you know, it basically says it's a homeowner's right to do this as long as they come and get a special exception, and I don't see a problem with it. That's it, okay, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Fletcher, do you have any last comments?
Nope.
Okay.
Yeah. If there's anyone else from the public, while the public hearing is still open, that wishes to speak, you can press star nine on your headset, and it'll alert us. I'm not seeing him.
Okay, this is Mr. Boudreau again.
Uh huh.
I just want to have a clarification. Is this area agriculture? Because the, his, the people that abut him, they have livestock. On the other side of that, there's a huge farm that has livestock. And again, you know, it, as far as we knew when we bought the property, this entire area was agricultural. That's why they weren't allowed to put multifamily homes in this area.
Well, it is zoned agricultural, but a, and different types of housing can be built in an agricultural zone with the appropriate permits and variances or special exceptions. And this special exception request for an accessory dwelling unit is one of those.
And that, that means that that property can be converted into a two-family apartment?
It's not really a two-family, it's a single-family home with an accessory dwelling unit.
I understand what you're saying, but what I'm trying to say is, eventually, it can be converted into a two-family home.
Well, I guess we'd have to wait and see if that becomes, if that ever were to come to the board.
Well, I would think that the board would take consideration about that now, you know, instead of, you know, think down the road about properties before you give permits to go ahead and build, because then if it's 10, 15 years down the road, and all of a sudden somebody wants to do something, and instead of an agricultural area, it's going to be made into, you know, an entire residential housing area, and change all the zoning laws.
Okay, thank you. Board members, comments or anything, or questions? Len?
Nothing at this time.
Denise?
Nothing at this time.
Sandra?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing. There's nobody else there, correct?
There's nobody else wishing to speak at this time, correct?
Okay, thank you. Public hearing is now closed, and the board is going to deliberate on this special exception request. Board members, what are your comments, thoughts, motions?
This is Denise.
Hi, Denise.
I don't, I have no issue with this turning into an accessory dwelling.
Uh huh.
They're meeting the criteria, they're meeting our setbacks and everything, and I don't have an issue with this.
Okay. Len?
I concur with Denise, I don't see a problem with it.
Sandra?
I agree with Len and Denise, I don't see a problem with this.
As do I. Do we have a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion, Gail.
Uh huh.
Special exception being granted as requested, given, I believe, there are two recommended staff conditions on it-
Yep.
-for committing a sketch of a changes to the driveway and, whoops, am I looking at the right ear?
Legitimize, legitimize the second kitchen?
That's fine.
To legitimize the second kitchen and to make sure they, they have the, the septic design for the existing home in one-bedroom ADU approved by DES and installed if required by DES.
Correct. So approval with the two recommended staff conditions.
Okay, can we add a third? Do you mind? If you look up at net condition or staff review, point number three, about the screened-in porches and decks, that they shall not be converted into additional living space even as a three-season room without coming back to the board for variance?
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay.
And also, this is Denise, they also, staff recommends that we ask that the applicant confirm that they, the internal connection.
Okay. And he did, he did, he did confirm that in the presentation. Do you want that as a condition?
As long as it was in, you're right, it's in the hearing, so we're all set.
Okay. All right. So we have, we have the-
Chair?
Pardon?
I'm sorry, Gail, this is Nancy.
Oh, hi, Nancy.
I apologize for interrupting. Just a reminder, I don't believe that the board made a motion as to regional impact. If you did, I apologize.
No, we didn't.
I don't have it in my notes.
No, we didn't, you're right. Can, can I have a-
I understand that there's no regional impact. This is Denise.
Okay, second?
I'll second that.
Denise, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Aye.
Roll call. Sandra?
Aye.
Denise?
Aye.
Len?
Aye.
And, and me, Gail, chair, yes. Okay, so we have regional impact now, so, and we'll go back to Len's motion, which was to approve the special exception as requested, with those three conditions. One is to legitimize the second kitchen, one is the new septic design approved by DES, and the other is just a statement regarding the proposed, that the porches and decks cannot be converted into additional living space. Do we have a second?
Denise?
Thank you, Denise.
Denise, second?
Thank you. All right, and we are going to do a roll call vote. Len?
Aye.
Denise?
Sorry, aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
And myself, Gail, yes, the motion carries four to zero. Thank you. You have your special exception.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next application is from Thomas and Louise Hanley, applicants and owners, seeking a variance to build a detached garage, 576 square feet within the floodway of the Piscataquag River. This concerns section 13.2.5 of the Gulfstown zoning ordinance. The property is located at 84 Dumont Park Road, map 25, lot 44, zoned R2. And do we have Mrs. Hanley on the phone? Derek?
Is Mrs. Hanley on the phone? I see, I believe the correct number is there.
Yes, this is Thomas.
Hello, Mr. Hanley, how are you tonight?
Very well, yourself?
I'm doing well. Okay, would you like to tell, would you like to tell us about your application and what you're looking to do?
Well, basically, I'm, I'm looking to put a detached, 24 by 24 detached garage to consolidate storage-
Okay.
-on the property.
Yep. Okay, and I'm going to backtrack for a minute, and I'm going to entertain a motion for regional impact, please.
Len, I move no regional impact.
Thank you, Len, do we have a second?
Seconded by Denise.
Denise, thank you. All in favor? Roll call vote. Len?
Aye.
Denise?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
And I vote yes as well. Vote is five to zero, so there is no regional impact. Go ahead, Mr. Hanley, I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's all right. That's all right. So basically, I have, I have a 12 by 16 shed. I do, I'm looking, I'm looking to get, I'm going to get rid of the shed and build the detached garage.
Okay. And the garage is going to be what size?
24 by 24.
24 by 24.
Yes, ma'am.
And explain to us about it being within the floodway.
Okay, it's within the floodway.
Okay.
Sorry. I don't understand your question.
How, how much into the floodway is it?
It'll be 51 feet off of the river, so it's, it's in the outer 100 feet. It's not within the-
Madam Chair?
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hanley.
It's in the outer 50-foot buffer.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Nancy, what did you have to say?
Yes, I apologize. You may, you may see a graphic representation of the location of the floodway in one of those Meridian documents that you have in the folder, but I can, I can tell you that Mr. Hanley's entire lot is located in the floodway, or actually, let me, in the floodplain. Let me just, I, I'm pointing on to the GIS map, so if you can just bear with me for a moment, and I can tell you generally where the floodway lies. But if you read through my staff report, I may have that in there, if you want to look through the first page of my staff report while I just poke around on the GIS.
Okay.
And the, the plans that I submitted on, on sheet one of four shows the delineation of the floodway.
Okay. Okay, so, and it's going to be accessed from a-
Madam Chair, I, I'm sorry.
I was going to just say, it's going to be accessed from a separate gravel driveway?
An existing gravel driveway.
Pardon?
There's an existing gravel driveway.
It's existing already, okay. Nancy, did you, did you have something to say, Nancy?
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, I have the GIS up on my screen with the, the flood map overlay, and it, on that overlay, it also delineates the floodway. So the southern, the southern reach of the floodway is beyond Mr. Hanley's property and, and well onto the other side of Dumont Park Road. So his entire property, as well as the majority of the parcels on Dumont Park Road, are not only within the 100-year floodway, but, I mean, within the 100-year floodplain, but also within the floodway.
Okay.
So Mr. Hanley's entire property, both lots that he has since consolidated into a single lot, it's entirely within the floodway.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I see that the planning board has already granted a conditional approval to construct the garage in that outer 50 feet?
Yes, so this has gone to the planning board already, because the, the other issue we have going on with, with these lots that are adjacent to the river or the lake is that they fall within the 100-foot wetland and surface water conservation district in, in the town ordinance. So Mr. Hanley's proposed location of this detached garage falls in the outer 50 feet of that 100-foot buffer, which is the planning board's jurisdiction.
Yep.
So they already signed off on it, and now it's a question of receiving an approval for building in the floodway.
Okay.
So it, on the first page of my staff report, you will see the zoning criteria that is required by FEMA.
Yep.
And some of the criteria was amended to update to the current FEMA language when the zoning amendments for the section of the zoning ordinance that speaks to the 100-year flood, floodplain. Those amendments were approved by the voters, and part of those amendments included this language, this variance criteria. So you'll see on page one of my staff report, A through D.
Yep.
Those are the four criteria that are required under FEMA if you are looking to request a variance from the, the town's flood regulations. And then that is in addition to the state criteria, so the five criteria that is in our zoning ordinance. So, I mean, in the zoning board application, and hopefully in the not-too-distant future, I'm going to incorporate the FEMA criteria into the application, so we won't have a separate handout for the applicants. But Mr. Hanley is aware, and I believe you'll find that the information that was previously submitted by his engineer, for purposes of a proposed building permit application that will need to be reviewed and approved by the building official, as well as his request to build in the outer 50 feet of the town's 100-foot wetland and surface water conservation district. I believe those two documents you have, I think they're both from Eric Mitchell and Associates-
Uh huh, yep.
-should address the criteria A through E for FEMA. It's outlined on page one of my staff report.
Good thing.
Maybe Mr. Hanley can speak to that.
Mr. Hanley?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am, Alan.
Go ahead.
Alan?
Yep.
Yeah. I have a question on Eric Mitchell's page three of four. It shows the lot, and there's three diagonal lines, red lines, that go across the plan and go across the site. What does that represent?
Sheet three of four. Two. I have no idea, sir. I have no idea, sir.
Okay. And Nancy?
I don't have a copy of that in my packet, Alan, I apologize. I, I do know that Eric Mitchell submitted that blue cover document with a little spiral bound, which is the no-rise certification, and that addresses criterion A, variance will not result in increased flood heights. And, let's see, and that should also address criterion C of FEMA, that there's no increase in flood-
Yep.
I'm sorry, I don't have the document in front of me, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Alan?
Do you have that document, do you have that document in front of you? It's a colored drawing from DCM.
I do have that, I do have that, with the three-
Three red lines- The three red lines?
The three red lines. Yep. But I don't know what they are either.
Until we find out what they are, I'm gonna decline.
Aye, aye, aye.
It may, if you give me a few moments, I can look up the FEMA map. It may actually be some graphic representation of the floodplains, a hundred-year floodplain, the five-hundred-year floodplain, and possibly the floodway. So I'm just looking in our files. I think I saved the little flood map for that property. So if the board doesn't mind, I'm in the process of looking in Mr. Hanley's file right now.
Those are the limits of the study.
The limits of-
The limits of the study that Eric Mitchell did for the no-rise certificate.
They were the limits of the study for the no-rise certificate?
Yes, ma'am. Right there, right there in the blue book.
Well, I don't have the blue book.
Well, I'm sorry, sir. I submitted two copies to Nancy.
I'm just concerned that it might be a right-of-way.
It's not a right-of-way. I can assure you of that.
Well, we'll give Nancy, let's give Nancy a chance to see if she can find it. And we can go on and-
I have, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Nancy.
I have a scan, I have a scanned copy in the electra file with Eric's ECN title block at the bottom, and it is entitled, hold on a second. FEMA floodway overlay map, lot redevelopment, map twenty-five, lot forty-four, and it is the floodway map. It has those, the dot patterns and any other graphic you see. That's, if you, if a copy of the, of the original FEMA map were there with the legend, it would explain, you know, what each of those represents. But it's just, if that's what you're referring to-
The topographic lines, if you go to the page five of his, page four, if you go to page four, which is the last document that you sent to us.
Yes, sir.
It would be a indication of the sectional profile of that floodplain to determine how it's impacted, how the floodplain is impacted on this site. I think we're okay. All right. I know what's going on.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm gonna rely on you, Alan. Gonna rely-
And I'm not really gonna.
Gonna rely on you for that one.
You're just trying to make that man's heart skip a beat, Alan, this evening.
It worked.
Okay, Mr. Hanley. Mr. Hanley, now we need to re-
Yes, ma'am.
Now we need to review your variance and FEMA standards for the record. Do you have your application in front of you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you want to explain when you, the section of where you put in your request for the variance, and you answered those five questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want to go ahead and explain those to us, please?
All right. Item number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because the wetland assessment and no-rise certification demonstrate no impact on flood levels.
Okay.
Number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because now, the application that I submitted was prior to the town voting, the town meeting where floodproof construction for an accessory dwelling is not required. But at the time that I submitted this, I said floodproof construction methods will be used, and assessment and certification demonstrate no impact on the floodway.
Okay.
All right. Number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because new structure would minimize potential spills and runoff, providing best management practice by EPA guidelines for national pollution discharge elimination system, best management practice.
Next-
Number four.
Yep.
The values of surrounding properties would not be diminished because the garage certainly will match the existing house finish. The wetland assessment and no-rise certificate demonstrate no impact to flood levels. So the garage certainly won't look out of place. It will match the houses that are down here. Number five, demonstrate that literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. Owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of the provision to the property because presently, on Dennis Park and Dumont Park, Chetel Ave, in the last eighteen months, there have, there's been one commercial steel building put up as a garage, and several houses. The proposed use is reasonable because flood impact is negligible. If the criteria in sub-paragraph A are not established, and unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist, and only owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, the property cannot be reasonably used in strict accordance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it. The existing shed that is not anchored, and I can tell you, having lived here through 2006 and 2007 plus, that shed traveled in the neighborhood of three hundred foot downriver, and I brought it back onto the property. It's not anchored. Presently, I have a tractor down there. I have boats. That stuff will be stored inside. The property is of the same characteristics of the neighborhood that have recently had garages erected.
Thank you. Now, what about-
Yes, ma'am.
What about the FEMA guidelines or standards that are required?
Which ones?
Well, I'll read them, and I think actually, your explanation for your own, for the variance criteria that you just read, kind of answers some of these. The variance will not result in increased flood heights of any magnitude, additional threats to public safety, fraud on or victimization of the public, or extraordinary public expense.
Yes.
And you said many times, through your criteria, as you explained them, that there's gonna be no impact on the flood levels.
None whatsoever, ma'am.
Okay. And if there's no impact on the flood levels, then I'm gonna guess that maybe, will they conflict with other state, federal, or local laws or ordinances?
No, ma'am.
And again, we have, now, this isn't for activity within the designated regulatory floodway, so there's no, and there's no, still regardless, there's no flood levels during the base flood discharge. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And is the variance the minimum necessary, considering the flood hazard to afford relief?
Yes, ma'am.
This is, this is the best you can do for staying out of the outer fifty-foot buffer?
I'm sorry?
I said, this is the best you can do for staying out of the fifty-foot buffer. Is that what you're representing?
Yes. In order, in order to stay out of the inner fifty-foot-
Uh-huh.
And still maintain the setback off the road.
Yep.
Fifty-one feet will give me twenty-eight feet back off the road, I believe it is.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
In order, in order to maintain that frontage setback.
Okay.
That's what I need to do off the river.
Okay. Let's see if the board has any questions or comments to make. Len?
Nothing from me, thank you.
Denise?
I'm all set at this time, thank you.
Alan?
Okay.
Sandra?
I'm all set, thank you.
John?
I'm good.
Okay. There are some recommended conditions if the board were to choose to approve this. Are you familiar with those?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And you're in agreement with them? A revised sketch of the proposed garage indicating no changes will be made to the existing driveway leading directly from the road to the proposed garage without additional permits or approvals, if required? And-
That reminds, Nancy has that?
Okay. And the existing shed indicated on the overlay map as to be raised, will be raised prior to issuance of any permits for the proposed garage, including for the slab?
I would like to ask that we eliminate that. I have, I make decoys, and my shed is full of decoys.
Uh-huh.
Would it be possible, I mean, until I get the structure up, that I can move my stuff into the garage? Could I leave it there?
Well, the board can certainly talk about it.
For it, I mean, if it's, if that's a, if that's a turning point, I'll put it on the trailer and move it again.
Okay.
This is Denise.
Uh-huh.
Nancy, is that gonna be an issue with getting a building permit?
Well, if the, if the board feels, if the board feels comfortable, we can revise the condition to, prior to the final inspection of the proposed garage. The issue is that the no-rise certification produced by Eric C. Mitchell takes into consideration the removal of that shed completely from the property, which is why the plan was drawn up showing that that existing shed is to be raised, because the no-rise certification accounts for that condition. So it has to be removed from the property. It's just a question of timing. So if the board feels comfortable with changing that, that timing to be removed prior to the final inspection of the proposed garage by the, by the building official, I would feel comfortable with that.
Okay. Thank you, Nancy.
And I'd say that-
You're welcome.
... accommodation to the homeowner's needs. He seems to be fully compliant with the other conditions, allowing him to continue storage until he moves to the other building is reasonable. I would suggest the amended condition is stated by Nancy.
Thanks, Len. Board, have any, any other members of the board have comments? Alan?
Yeah, what is the little shed on the back of the property close to the river?
That's a, that's a little shed that houses the kids' water toys.
Okay.
Okay.
That didn't float away? That's my name. It didn't float away?
Yes, it did.
Oh, okay.
I just, I, the, the two sheds, the two sheds sit on concrete blocks, and I just grabbed them with the forks on my tractor, and I brought them back to the house.
Okay. Nice. Thank you.
Denise? Denise, do you have questions or comments?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Sandra?
No, I'm all set.
John? John, are you there?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was, I was going mute. I'm all set. Thanks. All right.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we are going to- Open the public hearing. And if there is anybody in the public who wants to make a comment, then raise your hand with star nine.
Star nine.
Do we have anybody?
Hello?
Yes, could you identify yourself and your address for the record, please?
Yes, my, my name is Mike Weston. I live at eighty-four Dumont Park Road. I am the Hanley's next-door neighbor. And I just wanted to convey that I think that the addition of the garage is gonna actually enhance the neighborhood. I took a look at the drawings myself down at the town hall, and I see Tom has complied with everything that's been requested of him, and it's, the new structure will actually be not only safer, but stronger, and definitely flood-resistant if we should ever get another one. But I feel it's gonna enhance the neighborhood, as well as be something that's gonna be well done. So I'm very supportive of Tom's Louie's and that. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to call in. Is there, is there anyone else who has comment that they would like to make? Any members of the public? Okay, there's nobody else on the line, and so we are gonna close the public hearing, and the board is gonna enter deliberations. Board, what's your druthers?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Oh, go for it.
Okay. I motion that we grant the applicant a variance to build a detached garage, five-hundred-and-seventy-six square feet, within the floodway of Scatapara River, with the conditions that you read into the minute.
Uh-huh. From the two that are in staff review, number four?
Correct.
Okay.
I also would like to change that the shed will not be required to be raised prior to the construction of the shed, but it will have to be removed on final inspection from the building department.
How about prior to final inspection of the garage-
Yeah.
-by the building official? So before he can get his final inspection, it's gotta be removed?
Correct.
Okay. Perfect. Do we have a second?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Alan?
Do you want to say within thirty days after the issuance of final inspection, to give him thirty days to move his stuff? Would Denise entertain that?
Denise, is that acceptable to you?
You know, I'm just trying to think, you know, could he move in? Yeah, I'd entertain that. I'd entertain fifteen days.
Fifteen days prior, fifteen days prior to the final inspection?
No, fifteen days after.
Fifteen, fifteen days after?
Yeah.
Giving him time to move once the building is inspected.
Okay.
You all seconded the motion?
Okay.
Who seconded?
Len?
Alan?
Yes, Alan. Alan seconded the motion. So we have the motion to grant the variance with those two conditions. Is there any further discussion on that? Is there any further discussion on that? Len?
No.
Sandra?
No.
John? John?
No.
Okay, so, we're gonna do a roll call vote, and Denise?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Uh, Len?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
And I say yes as well, the vote is five to zero, all in favor. And Mr. Hanley, you have your variance to build your, your, um, garage.
Excellent, I thank you, I thank you all.
You're welcome. Just remember, 15 days after the inspection, that, that shed needs to be gone.
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
You as well.
Okay, our next... All right, where'd it go? Oops. Our last application of the night? Are, are we really there?
Yeah.
Wow. Okay, Easy Express Car Wash applicant in Veris Financial Corporation owner, seek the following. There we go. A special exception... Pardon? Somebody say something?
I thought they withdrew.
No, they withdrew their variance, they still have, they still ha- they withdrew their variance request, but they still have one special exception outstanding to allow the proposed, uh, car wash on a lot without street front. No, that's not the one.
Uh, it's for the use, special exception to, um, for car wash...
The car wash in the...
CIFZ. CIFZ.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
So, they are, they are going to be revising the plan to eliminate any frontage issues.
Yes, I remember seeing their letter. Um, yes, Alan?
Madam Chair? I think it's premature, they're not ready.
Why is that?
Because the plan I received this afternoon is different than the plan in the packet.
The plan you received this afternoon is different than the plan in the packet?
Yes.
That the colored landscape plan, Alan? This is Nancy.
Different layout.
Still have the applicant on mute at the moment.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Okay. And so, why does, how does that make it premature, Alan? If it's, if we're just looking at the use, we're not looking, we're, we're looking to approve or, or deny the use?
I'm not willing to consider part of it tonight and part of it again some later time.
Uh, this is Denise, Alan. I understand that that plan has changed, I took a look at it, but we're not gonna be weighing in on landscaping, we're weighing in on the use, the 50 years. The planning board is gonna be taking care of the development of the property.
Madam Chair?
Our decisions are all based upon information provided to the board. If a change is today, is unacceptable.
Nancy, you had something to say?
Yes, I, I just wanted to add that, um, uh, Jason Hill of TF Moran put together this landscape plan yesterday after speaking with me, and, um, I forwarded, um, busy, uh, butter, Mike Tabor's, uh, comments to him yesterday.
Yep.
Mr. Tabor reached out to me, and I asked him to email me his comments, which I forwarded to the board and forwarded to, uh, Jason Hill of TF Moran.
Yep.
So, in resp- in response to, uh, Mr. Tabor's concerns for, uh, for buffering, Jason and I thought it would be a reasonable idea in case the board wanted to, um, have that discussion regarding Mr. Tabor's comments, to put together a landscape plan, how he would attempt to address those. I did explain to both Mr. Tabor and to Jason Hill that, uh, the, the, uh, the concerns that Mr. Tabor rose in his email are really more focused on planning board's jurisdiction, but, uh, the zoning board could potentially wrap, wrap the, um, the concept into any kind of motion if they were to make a motion to, uh, grant the, the, uh, special exception for the use. So, it wasn't meant to, um, add any confusion or throw a plan, uh, a revised plan at the zoning board at the last minute, it was, it was, uh, really to address Mr. Tabor's, uh, concerns for the use adjacent to his property.
Okay. Anybody else?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead. Alan, is that you?
I'm too not interested in hearing it tonight.
Okay, what about the rest of the board? Len, we'll, we'll take a poll. Len?
Uh, I, for one, would be interested in finding out how they're going to address the frontage issues. I'm presuming that a big part of it was, uh, you'd be carving off essentially a separate one-acre lot from the corner of it for this, uh, and the question of a private a- access through another private easement. I'm assuming, and Nancy can correct me if I'm wrong, that for door access easement for the, uh, main lot, 549-1?
Well, I believe that Jason Hill is, um, is prepared to dial in and respond to any questions the board may have.
Okay, we'll, we'll bring him on, and we will start a discussion with him and, uh, see where it goes, and it may be that we don't have enough information to make a decision.
This is Jason, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Jason, thank you.
Okay, good, just wanted to make sure I was plugged in.
You're on.
Yeah, hi Jason, it's Nancy.
Now, I, you ju- you just came on, correct?
He's been listening.
Are you...
I've been on for about 20 minutes.
Okay, so you've been listening to the concerns of the board.
Yeah.
So, do you have any comments to their concerns?
First of all, thank you, we appreciate Goss Town, has been one of the best towns to deal with, with this current situation in terms of getting, keeping on moving with the, uh, normalcy, I guess you'd say, of economics and business.
Well, thank you for saying that.
We do a lot of business in a lot of towns, and you guys are doing it as well as anyone, I can tell you. We appreciate that, number one. And, uh, secondly, uh, to address Alan's concern or comments regarding the, the new plan, in terms of the changes in the plan, uh, we're not changing our requests or the relief needed, there's no change in the use of the property. All we did was, uh, since this was a kind of an evolutionary process in terms of the site planning and whatnot, um, the change in the plan that you're looking at for the graphic design, which was meant to address a direct concern that we received yesterday from a butter, is only that we added, uh, a manual component to the design, which is not the change in the proposed primary use. It was just, uh, um, to have a, a manual, like a two-bay manual service area as opposed to, uh, in addition to the tunnel, the single-lane wash tunnel, which was originally sent to you in our packages, uh, with the original request. So, the change was only to add that, uh, additional aspect to this pro- project. Uh, however, I understand the changing nature in plans is not... When you get updated plans, you know, you, uh, have to react to those, not getting a lot of time to react. I don't, you know, I don't, I can understand his, you know, um, comments, but we're not changing any of the nature of what we're here to talk with you tonight about, or ask for your permission for this special exception. I wouldn't talk about those variances that we've originally requested, which was for, uh, this property here is, uh, kind of in between Panardale and the town center, and it's, uh, a field area, and it's just to the west of, uh, Mike's Auto, which is on the south side of Mass Road. And it's across the street from, uh, used car sales shop. I believe there's a salon across the street. And this is right before you get to the bend on Mass Road, where there's a, a large substation, EverSource, and then you have the corridor comes down off the mountainside, there you can see all the, uh, ledge. So, to situate yourself at this site, it's owned by Veris Financial, that's the location of the site. The rail trail actually runs, um, parallel with Mass Road, uh, parallel in front of our property, forming a, a, uh, frontage condition, which was initially why I asked for the variance request, was that, um, there was no direct frontage as it currently exists on the parcel due to the, the sale of the property from the railroad, Boston Main Railroad to the town of Goss Town. And there was a access easement that was created, um, in the central portion of the frontage to provide access for this parcel, but there was, through the nature of the transaction, we believe that there was, it was a, a parcel sale, a land sale. Uh, there's actually a tax mapping lot that's assigned to the rail trail. So, the frontage was, initially you look at it as gone. You have access via this existing access and the utility easement in the central portion of the site, and, uh, which we have, but, so we, uh, uh, so we initially filed the variances based on not having the frontage but having the access. And once we developed our plans and have corresponded with the, the town, we realized we could develop, uh, a public right-of-way to, basically to connect our, this subject property, which is roughly a 13-acre property, to Mass Road, where we would build a public, uh, road, or we build a, a private driveway with a...
Private.
A public road.
Private road.
Yes. Public standards, and then we would create a right-of-way, uh, to provide the frontage, which is 50-foot minimum, uh, to, to basically provide the minimum frontage requirements to each of these, these two new parcels. And the two new parcels consist of this car wash, and then the remaining acreage, which is roughly, also the car wash is, I don't have the figures in front of me, but one and a half acres. The remaining acreage is just retained by another entity or it's subdivided. But for that reason, which we will deal with at the planning board, we will be able to, um, eliminate those variances for the frontage. So, now I'm left with the, uh, special exception for the use, which has not changed in the evolution of the plans that I discussed at the beginning of this conversation, where I, you know, the footprint of the site plan changed, but I'm not asking for anything different, other than, uh, than I was originally asking for. And that use is a, a car wash, uh, with a single tunnel, drive-through tunnel, and then a two-lane, which would be like a manual, uh, wash bay, uh, scenario. It's similar to the Sanoco, either a Shen- uh, a Shell or a Sanoco station towards the village on the south side of the road. I know there's a tunnel at that location, um, but it's on the drive-through car wa- automatic car wash, development, uh, similar to this in, in the vicinity to this project. We're going to... This is a newly-developed commercial flex, CI Flex district, which has been developed specifically to obviously raise more commercial development, tax funding than residential, it used to be a residential district. So, these are more, the newer properties are becoming developed as time goes by. So, I think that it's definitely consistent with what the town wants to do. I know the town, specifically by changing and rezoning this area, is looking for development and commercial development. And, uh, this will be a, a good new commercial development, with limited impact on any of the resources, in terms of like the school system or any of that. And, um, so I think it's appropriate. We're working with the rail trail, and, um, we will incorporate their planning on developing, I believe, this section of rail this summer or next. And I've been in touch with, uh, the gentleman from the planning board, um, man, David Pierce.
David Pierce.
And we're working with him to, you know, uh, coordinate our plans and to kind of look to, uh, spruce up the trail and help them in any way we can to provide, uh, any type of landscaping amenities and just general improvements in conjunction with the rail trail that we're, is kind of like a team effort. So, we're engaged with those folks, and we, uh, appreciate the opportunity to work with them. And I know my client, Andrew Esico, who's on the line, he's focused on the community, you know, and he's a local guy, and that's important to him, and he wants to, you know, make a positive influence on the community. So, I feel like we fit in pretty good on that portion of the property. And he's gonna enable through the development of this, his, uh, access core, you know, to, to develop and subdivide the property and create the access for the abutting use. We'll have a future in place where we could get some, you know, much more development, commercial development, that's kind of, we're laying the infrastructure, so to speak, for this future growth as well. So, those are all things that, we've also, uh, received some comments from the abutter, which we can, uh, appreciate and, and understand. And that would be Tabor's, I believe, to the east. And, um, in response to the comments, we have, I don't know if any of you had a, had a chance to look at the, I wrote a response to the comments today, and we would, um, appreciate those comments. We agreed to, um, install a, basically a vinyl privacy fence along the, uh, between our site and their site for the approximate distance they're looking for, to separate the uses. And, um, there's some other things that they asked that I answered that you have before you. You can all see, and you can ask me if you have further questions, but I've responded to all the comments, and we wanna be good neighbors, and we think you've done a proactive job, and I'm just gonna leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that the planning board discussed, um, this to provide a comment to the ZBA. And our staff review states that they discussed the request for the special exception with TF Moran, uh, March 26th, and it was noted that the use is permitted with special exception, and they had no comments on the overall plan or access of the, of the property. What is that the use is permitted with special exception? And they had no comments on the overall plan or access? And I see, Jason, you still there?
Yes.
Okay, now, I, in your comments regarding Mr. Tabor's letter, can you explain the six-feet-tall vinyl privacy fence versus the eight-feet he requested?
We're open to an eight-foot fence. However, I believe, and I haven't confirmed this, that it's a zoning issue. There's a, um, assuming that the zoning does not allow for that tall of a structure, we would instead propose the maximum allowable separation distance per the zoning ordinance and use that instead. And I guess if you want me to iterate on that, I'm not, I'd like to say, sort of, you know, verbally, the town has a minimum, uh, separation for parking lots in driveways, which is either five or 10 feet in the commercial industrial flex. We're providing 25 to 45, 50 feet. So, there's, purposefully in our design, we're preserving a, a stand of existing vegetation, which will also, it won't, it'll buffer sound a little bit, but it's... but it's also going to buffer the site visually, like from the, um, minimal amount of lighting we have, we're going to have the fence plus five times the amount of buffer than, you know, than what would be the minimum requirement. I mean, I understand we have a big parcel, we can do what we want. But we're also giving, every time we, you know, do more than the minimum, there's a balancing act, you know, so we recognize that too. But I think that those combination of measures will, will definitely quell the concern of the abutter. And we could potentially, um, go with a, a two foot berm and a six foot fence on top of it and then achieve the eight foot height. If the additional two foot is that important to the, the board, considering we're giving them 30 foot of woods in addition to that, we can make it work either way.
Okay.
I have a quick question on regarding that side.
And who is this?
This is Denise.
Okay, thanks Denise. What's your question?
Sorry. Um, am I correct in saying that the, the vacuum system that you're putting in is going to be on that side of the lot where there's an abutter?
Yes.
And are they going to be run 24 hours a day or restricted?
They'll be restricted. At this point, what we're, we're looking to be open for is, um, let me see. I had written it down. I believe it was seven to eight or seven to nine, seven days a week.
Seven days.
Okay, so even the vacuums will not be running 24 hours?
Yeah.
Correct. But they will be proposed at this point, our operating hours, seven days from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. There will be blower, that, or not blowers, vacuums that are on the east side of the parking lot. But they're, we pulled the whole development away since, for consideration of the neighbors, obviously, so that it's an appropriate distance to buffer all any sound, uh, which, uh, may occur from the vacuuming.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Does the board have any other questions of Jason?
Uh, Ellen, this is Len. If I, just to clarify Jason's explanation, Earl, here the frontage required from the previous ver- variance request are going to be dealt with by creating a private right of way between the rail trail and the property line or within the property line to grant access to the site we're talking about. Not sure I understood exactly proposing.
It's going to be built, uh, from Mass Road through the rail trail property, which is owned by Goffstown, which we have a easement for, uh, over to work with for access. And then it's going to extend on to this subject property and provide, at a minimum, we'll provide enough, uh, of a right of way for a fire truck, like a temporary dead end or a permanent dead end condition with a T or an L shaped or a cul-de-sac shape, one of those three shaped conditions, which is built to town standards, will, will form basically the frontage for these two, uh, one new property. This sub, this will be subdivided from one to two properties. So we'll be extending that approximately, I'll say 50 to 60 feet. You know, there's an existing cross access easement through the, which was given by the railroad to the town, uh, to, uh, well, you can see it on the plan. It was, it cuts through the town of Goffstown rail trail, permanent access easement. And I'll extend that to provide a minimum 50 foot of frontage for each of the two properties we're creating. And probably excess of 50. So we'll meet the minimum frontage by the definition, you know, the town's, we'll meet the town's frontage requirements. And we'll be obviously providing, um, the design of our road will accommodate the fire truck condition for, uh, and any other conditions for, uh, access and egress.
All right, where, where is the current easement located? Is that the one that's roughly in the middle of the property?
Yes, right, basically right after zigzag. The property has this, the, the rail trail takes a zigzag shape, uh, in the middle portion of it. And I'm trying, and so the easement is right in the zigzag. It, it, it's a 60 foot wide access, permanent access in utilities slash sewer water corridor, which is, I believe it was given from originally, Varys paid $5,000 to Boston Railroad to get the access easement. And then since then, although that, that was what was given. So property originally actually showed up as a, an easement back in the day. It had, it had evolved in the way it was treated by the railroad. But since, it eventually was conveyed to the town of Goffstown through a deed. And in that aspect of how it was treated, the railroad basically said through that transaction, it was treated as a parcel and not a right of way or an easement, according to our surveyors. And it's kind of map and lot, actually, tax mapping lot through Goffstown. So that's kind of the evolution of how that developed. But we do have, uh, a recorded permanent access to the utility, uh, 60 foot wide easement through that parcel for access to this, to my client's parcel or, or the applicant's parcel.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair?
And that is, you are?
Uh, Nancy.
Uh, Nancy, go ahead.
May, may I just add a little bit, uh, to what Jason just mentioned?
Yes, please.
Uh, if you, in your packet that was submitted by Jason, if you look at that sheet C6, that's entitled Site Development Plans, and then you look at the last one that shows the easement plan and that dates back to the, uh, 80s, it's actually dated January 4th, 1987. That easement plan shows the layout of, of the easement that has since been recorded. And, um, if you look at the sheet C6, the proposed site development plans, as, uh, as Jason indicated, there's that little jaw, that kind of diagonal jog in the frontage, um, of the, um, of the railroad right of way. And then you'll see intersecting that from Mass Road down to the top of the jog is a dash line. With, and then to the left, you'll see the proposed layout for the driveway. And then you'll see another dash line enclosing that whole proposed driveway. So that's the, the dash line, um, and that little zigzag, uh, roughly incorporates that existing access easement.
Okay.
If that makes any sense.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Board members, do we have enough information to continue on with the, uh, special exception request for the use in the CIFC zone?
I feel we have enough information. This is Denise.
Okay. Len?
Yes, I think we've got enough to proceed.
Sandra?
I believe we also have enough to proceed.
Ellen, were your questions answered enough?
I abstain.
You're going to abstain, okay. And John?
Yes, I think it's fine.
Okay.
Ma- Madam Chair, this is Denise.
Yes.
I'd like to motion that there's no regional impact.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
This is Nancy.
Yeah.
I don't, Ellen just abstained, um, so I don't know if he's abstaining from the vote on regional impact and whether he's going to abstain from the, uh, the vote on the special exception. I just wanted to remind that John is in the waiting line if he needs to be, uh, up as a voter for Ellen.
Okay, Ellen, Ellen, you want to clarify your, um, abstention, please?
All right, Ellen, Ellen, you want to clarify your, um, abstention?
I can't hear anybody.
Ellen, are you there? Is he there?
Ellen, we can't hear you if you have your phone on mute.
No comment.
Pardon?
I said no comment.
Are you going to abstain from the rest of the application? Or are you going to recuse yourself from the application so that John can vote in your stead?
I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay, I'm just clarifying. The question was asked, so I wanted to, to get a clarification out there. Okay, so we do have Denise's motion to find no regional impact. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, Len seconded the motion. Ellen is abstaining. Um, Len, you're, or Denise, we'll start with you.
Aye.
Len?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
And me, so that makes four to zero to one with Ellen abstaining. So we find that there's no regional impact. Um, we will go ahead with the, um, special exception criteria. Jason, are you ready for that?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, just for the special exception as it applies to the use in the CIFC zone.
Okay. There's four criteria. The first of which is, the specific site is in appropriate location being consistent with the town's master plan. Um, would you like me to read in my written statements or just?
You can just summarize them or read them, whichever you prefer.
Well, I like to say that I've filed my written statements on record with the town. Uh, so I would supplement those with, uh, the use is consistent. Uh, I've already stated the reasons. There's a commercial district formed for these, the specific, uh, purpose of converting the residential properties into commercial properties. There's similar uses, uh, in surrounding, uh, parcels. Uh, the second criteria is that the use will not alter the character of the neighborhood. And that's very similar in the, uh, in rationale to the first criteria. Uh, we're not introducing a, a new use into the neighborhood. Uh, the use exists, the, the specific use exists fairly nearby. And it's a business districts met with, um, you know, used vehicle sales and, uh, repair shops, um, not a lot of residential, um, districts abutting this. So, um, it's consistent with the character of the neighborhood. The nuisance, the third criteria is we will not create a nuisance or hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Um, the trip generation for the car wash is not going to be a significant, uh, new flow of traffic. Most of the traffic that uses the car wash is already on the road. They're, they're going somewhere else. They're not, it's not a destination. We will get a DOT permit through our planning board process. And any mitigation as deemed necessary will be handled at that time. And then fourth, uh, is the size of the parcel. Uh, that's, we're not seeking any variances or waivers for any of those, you know, regulations. So I'll let that attest to the, to the resolve or the address of number four. And, uh, and that would be it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does the board have any further questions for the applicant or the applicant's representative? Len? Len, do you have further comments or questions?
Out of time.
Den- uh, Denise?
I'm all set at this time.
Sandra?
I'm okay.
Ellen?
Okay.
And John?
All set.
Okay, then we will close the public here, uh, clo- we will open the hearing to the public and, uh, see if there's anybody there that has to make it, that would like to make some comments. And I'm being told that there is nobody on the line to make public comment. So I'm going to close the public comment and I will entertain discussion or a motion.
This is Denise.
Uh huh.
Um, I don't have an issue with this. Um, my only concern is the vacuums. Cause I know that the, uh, the new vacuums that were put in down the road are extremely loud. Now, they don't, they're not annoying to me because I have a commercial piece of property, but I did think to myself, I would hate to be a resident near something like that. So I just want it to be on record that I would hope that the, however they set up the vacuum system, they're insulated somewhat sound and definitely to restrict the time that the vacuums are running.
And this is Len, I would second that, uh, that Tabor's are in a rather unique position being, uh, one of the sole residents in that zone and they've been there for 40 years. I would also hope that anything that can be done to ameliorate the noise from that would be taken care of.
Jason, do you have comments to that?
Well, we've already planned for it in terms of, uh, the positioning of the site and the buffering. But there is, uh, so we, we agree to the recommendations and, um, have already kind of planned that out in our design.
How far away, how far away are they from the actual home?
Uh, I don't have the plan of fundry, but I looked at it the other day. From the residence, it was approximately 55 feet from the closest vacuum to the, um, that was to the, here to the pool, there's a pool and there's a house. So, um, that was through a wooded area with the fence. So the, um, there's an appropriate distance there. And if there was ever a problem in the future where the resident had due right to call in that it was too loud and it was a violation of the town's noise ordinance, there are, um, silencers that are likely installed anyways. But there are mechanisms in terms of the silencer devices that can be put onto the blowers, which will further reduce the sound output.
Could we include that as a condition in that your, your, um, your, your client would be, be agreeable to it? Because of-
Condition B.
Madam Chair, my, this is Denise.
Uh huh.
Um, I don't know if I need to put it as a condition. I want it brought up, um, in the approval, that they will do what they can to keep the no- the sound of the vacuums down. That's going to be a planning board issue, but by us, um, bringing it up here this evening, it will reinforce that.
Okay.
And I know that they'll, they'll have to abide by the town's noise ordinance, number one. There's already a condition that's in your books, should be. We, I don't know, most towns have a 75 decibel limit. It says you cannot exceed 75 decibels for a certain amount. So I'd have to review the Gofftown ordinance, but I would submit for the record we would have, uh, conformed to the noise ordinance, which is an existing ordinance. Uh, and we can try to increase our, um, we will do everything we can to improve over the minimum noise ordinance levels. noise ordinance levels, but I just don't have specifics on that at this point, so I agree to Denise's, Denise's condition.
Her recommendation?
Yes.
Yeah, because it will really be something to be determined by the planning board.
We do, we do want to be good neighbors, I mean, we got, uh, we're going to exist, my client and Mike's auto will exist together for probably a long time, we don't want to get off on the wrong foot, obviously, we want to be, so yes, we, we're good with that.
So I have, I, just a quick comment, I'm sorry, this is Denise again, so if, I'm not certain what the, um, ordinance is for sound, but where you're in a flex zone, would you be open that whatever the ordinance is toward a residential, would you follow that? Whatever.
I don't know about that, because he's got a shop that, the runner, he's running drills already in his shop, if you look at the plan, it's right on the property line, so he's probably automat, yeah, I, I don't want to reduce my levels to a non, I would not be open to that, no.
Okay, now that's fine, I...
But appreciate the question.
I'm sure the issue will come up at the planning board anyway, and they will, they will address it. Our issue really is just the use as a car wash.
Sure, yeah, we can, uh, nail that all down, iron it all out, those details, during the planning board phase.
Okay, now, uh, would you address the last paragraph of the letter you submitted today to Nancy? It says, "As a condition of ZBA approval, we'll revise the access plan to comply with the town's frontage requirement in RSA 67441. You agree to build a private road to town standards across the easement." I know you just, you mentioned this, connecting Mass Road with both the car wash lot and the remainder lot, each provided with the minimum frontage required for the commercial industrial flex zone, and for these reasons, the above noted variances or special exception is not required, um, but, so you're, you're agreeing that this could be a condition of approval?
Yes, that we will not need a frontage variance, I'm going to develop a subdivision plan with this right-of-way and agree to a public, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, and agree to, uh, construct a road to public standards and have it tested, you know, obviously to verify that, to provide the frontage to this car wash and then the remainder parcel of land, which will be roughly 11 to 12 acres.
Okay.
So that's all that means, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else have comments or questions or a motion?
Gail?
Is the public hearing closed?
Yes, I had closed that already, Alan?
We, um, we did grant a variance to a property across the street for a mixed-use residential commercial, and they were not concerned about the noise on the road or whatever, and they are direct abutter across the street.
Okay.
Just for your least information.
Thank you.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Anybody else have comments or questions?
Go ahead.
Thanks, I motion that we grant a special exception to the applicant for a car wash in a commercial industrial flex zone with the conditions that we discussed this evening.
Uh, that would be the conditions that I just read about the, um, private road to town standards?
Correct.
Is that, is that the only condition?
Um, to reduction of noise.
He's going to meet the zoning ordinance for that, he agrees.
Right.
I don't have any other conditions.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Does that save him?
This is, yeah, this is Sandra, yep.
Thank you, Sandra. Um, all right, so we have the motion to grant the special, special exception for the use in the commercial industrial flex zone with the condition of the private road to town standards, as we discussed and as the applicant submitted in his letter dated April 6th. Um, we'll take a roll call vote, Denise?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
And I will say yes, so we have an all vote, 5-0, all in favor, motion carries.
Thank you, Al, thank you, Alan.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you again, the whole zoning board, because you guys are doing a good job of keeping, you know, everything aside, you guys are keeping things moving, and we appreciate that very much.
Thanks, Jason, that's very nice of you to say.
Have a good night.
Okay, um, let's see, do we have any correspondence?
Thank you, sorry to worry.
I'm not seeing correspondence.
I don't believe we do, um, at the next meeting, I know?
Yeah?
It's Nancy.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I don't believe, um, for this month's meeting, we'll make sure that we go ahead and, uh, um, put, uh, on the, um, the agenda, Sam, or actually, John will, uh, need to be reappointed as an alternate if, um, he wishes to continue, and, um, there may be some other little details that need to be addressed, but I'll talk with Kathy Ball in the meantime.
Okay, and our next meeting is May what, June 11th?
Uh, you'll just bear with me for a moment.
May 5th, Derek says?
Meeting 5th.
Okay, so our next meeting?
Next meeting is, the next meeting is May 5th, the Des Moines Airporting.
Okay, and, um, okay, so then, uh, the only other thing, I think the little bit of business to tend to now would be the nomination and election of a chair and a vice chair. Do we have, excuse me?
Uh, were we going to hold that business for next meeting, Gail?
I thought we were going to do it tonight.
At the beginning of the meeting, you said we'd wait, no?
No, did I say we'd wait?
I think you said you would wait, but you...
I thought I said we weren't, we'd do it till the end of the meeting, is what I thought I said.
Yes.
Yeah, because our...
I'm going to name and hat as the chair.
Our, our rule, our policies...
Okay, I'll make a motion, I motion for Gail to be the chair and Lynn to be vice chair for the next year. This is Denise.
Okay, I got that. All right, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Sandra. Lynn, you okay with being a vice chair?
I'm okay with it.
Thank you, and I will, I will accept the nomination as well, thank you Denise and Sandra. Um, we'll take a roll call vote, Denise?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
And I'll say aye as well, motion carries. And lastly, but not least, a motion to adjourn?
All moved.
Alan? And a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Sandra? Okay, motion?
I'll second.
Sandra seconded. I heard, I heard her voice first. Nancy, I know we're done, we're done now, but, um, all these papers that you left me, you need them all back, correct?
Yes.
Uh, yes, just throw everything in the box, leave it downstairs, and I'll pick it up in the morning.
Okay, thank you very much, you guys all have a good rest of your night.
And I would like to publicly thank Sandra, she's out in the front lines every day, so thank you.
Yes, Sandra.
You have to, thank you, Sandra.
Everybody stay safe.
Yeah, I agree, you stay safe.
You as well, thank you. Have a good night, everybody, thanks.
Good night.
Thanks Derek for promoting.